Good evening and thank you for joining us for our May 3, 2022 Board of Education meeting. Please join us in a pledge for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Byrne for the report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much. Good evening and thank you for joining us for our May 3 Board of Education meeting. Tonight is the annual budget hearing for the 2022-2023 school district budget, so I will keep my report brief so we can get right to it, as I know we have a lot of ground to cover this evening. We are coming into the busy season in school life and a number of events. It's wonderful to be saying this, a number of events that have taken place since our last meeting. First, we had our annual Board of Education and City Council meeting on April 23. We had a good discussion with the council and then got to walk together in the Little League and softball opening day parade. Last Thursday night, many of us enjoyed the Rye High School Arts Awards, which, as Principal Suzanne Short pointed out, marks the beginning of senior season, the time when we celebrate our seniors and their accomplishments in the period leading up to graduation. The annual Midland Fair took place on Saturday with a Wild West theme. And yesterday, we welcomed Dr. Denise Pope, the founder of Challenge Success at Stanford University, who came to speak to parents and teachers about reimagining student success and deepening student engagement in all aspects of school life. Speaking of the budget, the 2022-2023 school district budget roadshow continues. Since our last meeting, I've been to see the Rye Rec seniors group and I spoke to parents at the Midland PTO meeting. At Rye Rec, I was joined by junior Mari Moorishen and sophomore Kiki Keith, who sang songs from the Broadway shows Waitress and Little Shop of Horrors, and the Midland fifth graders, who sang two songs for their upcoming performance of Annie Junior, Tomorrow and NYC. Once again, they were a tough act to follow, but I'm more than happy to be upstaged by our students on the roadshow any day. This week, I'll be speaking to the Rye Chamber of Commerce on Wednesday and the Rye Lions Club on Thursday, and I'm looking forward to seeing many community members there and to hopefully answering all their questions about the budget and about the school district. The focus on Excellence Budget Newsletter is at the printer and will soon be winding its way toward mailboxes across Rye. Every year, we produce this newsletter with information about the budget vote and Board of Education election and mail it to every postal address in 10580. This year, we are facing both printing and postal hurdles, so we have posted the newsletter on our website for those who wish to take a look early. Our COVID case numbers continue to reflect the current case numbers in the community. We have switched from sending out weekly updates about case numbers to providing a link to the New York State dashboard. We do continue to report to the state for this dashboard on a daily basis. And finally, the news you've all been waiting for. I believe I can now officially say that we will give back the last snow emergency day built into the calendar. This day is Friday, May 27, the Friday of Memorial Day weekend. Schools and offices will be closed that day, and we will send out a communication to notify the community, and the calendars will reflect this change as of tomorrow. And this concludes my report for this evening.
I thought April was going to throw a curveball at us that second week. There was some snow. It was really trying. I was worried there for a day.
I'm thinking.
They're going to hit us there.
A little too chilly.
Yes. And thankfully, rain has not gotten in our way either, so thank you very much for that report. And just as a little side note, to further emphasize Dr. Denise Pope's talk last night, I was able to attend, which was just wonderful, and there's so much great information on the Challenge Success website for people to go and take a look at. And I know that there were many people probably that streamed in on the YouTube link, and we had a little bit smaller but very engaged group of parents that were there engaging with her, and it was, it's just really great information. So I'd encourage anyone who wasn't able to attend or be a part of that to really check that information out.
And we will be sending follow-up information out about Challenge Success and links to some of the reports she spoke about last night and to their website. You can't access everything on the website, but there are open items that are easy to get to, but that will be coming in my Friday update.
Great. Okay, so we will move right on to the presentation and discussion one of the public budget hearing of the 2022-23 recommended budget that's been adopted by the board. I will turn it over to All Things Money.
Just a reminder of what the superintendent's budget is all about for '22-23. We are looking at a proposed budget-to-budget increase of 5.56%, giving us a total budget for '22-23 of $99,477,734.
This is a tax cap compliant budget, so the tax levy increase is 3.97%, and obviously, that sounds different from 2% for the 2% tax cap, but there are a number of exclusions, but this is a fiscally responsible tax cap compliant budget.
Having said that, this is a familiar chart that we're used to seeing and the breakdown of the budget in detail having to do with the 12 different categories that we typically see, including salaries, benefits, the educational components, and then what I call the support aspects of the budget to total the $99,47 million. Just notable expense shifts, we are looking at increases in benefits of $1.17 million. Debt service, which we've talked about related to the passing of the $79.9 million bonds. We are moving full speed ahead with all of the work related to that, and now the debt related to that authorization is coming to fruition with an increase in debt services this year of $1.1 million. We have increase in salaries of $1.65 million. These are dictated predominantly by our contractual obligations having to do with our bargaining units, and we also anticipate special education expenses, which is very student specifically driven, of $900,000 for the upcoming school year.
And just to add some additional color, the salary increases are, that includes the new positions that we're adding, but if you recall, we don't look at just increases because there are also decreases. It's a net increase of 1.8 full-time equivalent teaching positions because there were 5.8 additions and 4.0 reductions, so we balance that out. And it's really important, and I've talked a lot about this out in the community in my presentations, there is a significant commitment to mental health. We all have talked endlessly. Parents are talking about it. It's in the news. We are in a mental health crisis. The pandemic has exacerbated the mental health challenges that young people are facing, and we were able to use, with the approval of the board, the majority, actually probably all of our carers' money and then some, so that was the federal COVID relief money, to support the hiring of ESS last April, and that was three additional social workers to provide mental health support for our kids. Those three social workers have had completely full caseloads since day one of walking into the schools. They have been working with students. They have been working with families. They have been strategizing with teachers. They have been conducting professional learning throughout the district and workshops for families because of where we are at this moment in time in our kids' lives. That needs to continue, and this budget reflects that. This budget reflects that we're keeping two social workers from ESS, one that will be assigned to the middle school, one that will be assigned to the high school, and that we'll be hiring a second counselor for the elementary schools to complement Rosie Brackett, who the board spoke with a few weeks ago. So we'll have two counselors working across the three elementary schools, and we will have a social worker dedicated to the middle school and a social worker dedicated to the high school. In addition, we've talked, we talked pre-pandemic about the needs of some of our kids for a therapeutic support model in the middle school and high school. Those needs have grown exponentially with the pandemic, and the number of kids that are requiring hospital placements for mental health, acute mental health challenges has significantly increased, and we need to have a structural support in place in the buildings to help with the transition and to help when kids are in that acute state and needing that extra support. And that is also included in this allocation and in this budget. In addition, we're continuing to build the programs that have been successful for all of our kids, expanding the engineering program that has been highly successful at the elementary school to a full-blown-out engineering and robotics program at the high school. So we now have a 6 to 12 pathway in engineering and robotics, continuing the life skills program that has been K through 8 in the district. It's a fairly new program at the middle school and one that has really helped to bring our kids into the community in a way that parents were absolutely concerned that we weren't able to do before. The program at the middle school has been highly successful and will grow to the high school. So we have the ability to keep our students right here in our schools, in our community, with a well-planned, well-executed K through 12 life skills program. So these are huge pieces, really important pieces, that constitute these shifts in the budget for this coming year. And just the staffing highlights, so this is what gets us to that 1.8 increase. So on the increase side, you see an increase of the school counselor. That's at the elementary level. There are, there's the increase in tech ed, so we're taking the .4 technology, the engineering teacher, and becomes a full-time 1.0 teacher. There's a slight increase in physical education. There is an additional teaching assistant for a fifth section of kindergarten that we're projecting at Midland School. There is the additional teacher for the high school life skills program. There is the teaching assistant for the therapeutic support program, and there is the teaching assistant for the life skills program. That's on the addition side. On the decrease side, there is one less elementary teacher required based on enrollment and class sections across the district. There is a .6 reduction in mathematics. It's not cutting any programs or having fewer offerings for kids. It's just based on enrollments and where we are with the sections we need for this year, and that's going to be a wash with the tech piece. There is a 1.0 reduction in needed English teachers, a 1.0 reduction in Spanish, a .2 reduction in Mandarin. And again, I'll stress, there are no program cuts or no course cuts as a result of these reductions. These are reductions that we can make and still offer the great programming. And there's a .2 reduction in phys ed at the middle school.
So when you look at the revenue side of how this budget is going to be supported, property taxes makes up the bulk of the support, payment in lieu of taxes, interest and penalties, sales tax utility, and so on. This budget is allocating $2.3 million in use of existing fund balance to support this budget, again totaling the $99,47 million that we are targeting as our budget total. What does this mean in terms of the levy and tax rate? Again, this is a tax cap compliant budget, so we, our calculation was within the tax cap allowable tax cap calculation, which translates into a tax levy increase of 3.97%. You will see on the ballot a tax levy of $89,778 million. Taxable assessments at this time, which is a number that continues to be updated until we pass the warrant, is standing currently at $130.8 million, which translates into an estimated tax rate per thousand of assessment of $686.31. Notable, there's also going to be a proposition number two on the ballot that everyone can expect to see. This is asking for a vote for a capital projects resolution related to the use of lunch fund reserves in the amount of $400,000 to be dedicated to support the effort of adding air conditioning in the high school cafeteria. It's related to the bond project. We actually talked about it when we were talking about the projects as a result of the $79.9 million bond project that we had always anticipated using proceeds from the lunch fund operation to support the effort in the cafeteria.
And this is money that, it's a tax-neutral proposition, so there is no impact on increasing taxes or no increase to the tax levy or tax assessment, and this is money that can only be used to support the cafeteria and food service program. So for example, we had to replace an oven at Milton in 2019. This is the fund where it would come from. Most of the expenditures are fairly small and don't require a community vote, but a $400,000 transfer from that reserve fund does require the community vote, but there's no negative tax impact. It is a tax-neutral proposition.
We are always available for comments, questions, concerns related to the budget or any other topic in our school district. These are ways to reach out and get in touch with us. Reminder, hope to see everybody come out on May 17. It is the annual school budget vote and trustee election. Any questions?
Thank you very much for that overview again. I just wanted to kind of step back and revisit, just so we can have it be a very clear understanding for the, for the community, the debt service piece. And just so to clearly say that the debt service amount is based only on the money that has been borrowed to date, which is about $50 million.
Correct. So we had, we asked for authorization of the $79.9. That was the number that's known to our community. However, we do not borrow money unless the money is being utilized based on the projects that have been approved by SED and awarded. This has always been a multi-phase project with the expectation that we were in for at least five years from start to finish. Projects are being sent up to SED for approval. Once that approval is received, we then go out to bid. Based on those bids and awards that we do is how we determine what funds are required and needed for borrowing at that time. So we do not exceed what is required, well, first of all, we cannot exceed the $79.9, period, end of story, but we do not borrow at the time unless we have a targeted number based on awarded bids.
Right.
And it is important to note that when we projected out the impact of the financing for the capital projects back in 2019, when we went to the community, we had lots of charts, and I remember standing everywhere. We used to carry them around on the boards, and there was a three-year period where we showed an increase and probably the significant impact of the capital projects borrowing for three successive years. This is year one of that three-year period. After that three-year period is when older debt from, I believe, the science wing and some other projects comes off, and you start to actually see a decrease in the debt service payments in the, in the budget. So this is that, this is year one. We're a year ahead of that chart because the, I think the only upside to COVID was getting the capital projects started early. When we were, we did the field a year before we anticipated. So, so if you were to go back and look at that chart, if you saved it in your folder at home, you'll see that this was supposed to begin next year. It begins this coming year as opposed to the following, and then it should be three years, and then boom, down.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great time to revisit that, I think, because this is exactly what we expected. It's, it's funny to be talking about it, that we're lucky, that we've got as much as what we did done when we did, that we're a little bit, the field is ahead, which everyone is thrilled with, and that, you know, given the, given the inflation, given the uncertainty in contracting and bidding, we are thrilled that we are where we are in this project to get where we are, and that yes, this is exactly what we talked about and exactly what we expect. Maybe a little bit off because we haven't paid down as much debt as we had expected at this point, but that doesn't, that's just moving it over time. We will catch up. And we're paying down the debt that we took on already. This isn't, you know, debt where we're not paying the principal back until the end. We are already paying down debt as we go. So that was a very elaborate and planned-out scheduling we did, and we're on, and we're on track, and the fact that we're ahead is actually great for us. So thank you.
Any other board members that wanted to make some comments or ask any questions?
I don't have any more questions, but I have to say a final thank you to the administration. As I've said before, going through this for the first time, you know, I watched it as a non-board member and thought I understood, you know, a lot of the thought that went into this and participating really for the last few months and watching the meticulous detail from everybody on the team, from the way the presentations by Cost Center. So anyone at home who has a question and they've seen the budget and they're questioning something outside of what's been so clearly explained, like the interest expense and, you know, salaries, you know, contract increases, that information is readily available on the board videos, and the meticulous work that Dr. Byrne, your team, has done is so helpful and transparent. So thank you so much, because I know it's a lot of work. And I just, as I think about all the investment, the important and necessary investment you guys presented to invest in the mental health side of it, that obviously the board supports, and we all understand that it's, it's so imperative. We can't understate how important it is for our kids, but to be able to add that in and still present us with a tax cap compliant budget and maintain all the current programs, it's just the execution and the management, you know, it's just clear sort of how meticulous that is. So we just appreciate, you know, the continued hard work, and, you know, the community has been very generous in the past, supporting the schools with the capital bond, being an example. You know, and I think your roadshow people can go, you know, see you present if they have any questions too, because there's just so much more information, you know, but I just appreciate the transparency and all the details along the way. It's really helped me, and I'm excited for our kids.
Yeah, we are, we are super lucky to live in a community that values education and invests in it along with us. I say it all the time, and this is probably a good time to say it again. Incredibly lucky.
Yes. As everybody knows, I can't speak excitedly enough about the mental health supports that are in this budget and that are present in our schools now, and the insistence on the administration and the board in our budget to continue to put our students first. This is a budget that is very reflective of our students' needs, where they currently present themselves, how they currently present themselves to us, and we are very fortunate to be able to have a budget that puts our students first in a tax cap compliant way, in a way that prioritizes their mental health, their academic success, and as well as continues to support the structures of our district, which allow us to continue to support the academic and mental supports and successes of our students. And that, to me, we are extremely fortunate to have a budget that is so clearly focused on our students. That is not the case in many places. In many places, you will find budgets that are filled with administrative activities and programs, and that is not this budget. And we are very fortunate that you are able to present a student-centered budget in a tax cap compliant way, and I am greatly appreciative of that.
I love the comment you just made about, and reminds me, like, our job is to meet our students where they are. And we've already seen this happening with the spending that we've done this year in mental health. Our students are engaging with it. They're coming to us, and they are engaged in this, and these, these services are being used every day and being utilized. So again, fantastic that it's there and that we will continue to do that.
So I just want to echo, I don't think I could say it any better than, than the three folks who've just said all that, but, but I do, you know, I think we've said, we've talked about it time and time again here. There's, the, the quality of the work that is being done across all areas within our district continues to grow and progress and get better and better all the time. And so much of it is hinged on the strategy and the approach and the prioritization of talking to our students, seeing what their needs are, knowing that, you know, we could have, we could have, we could have used the, you know, the money that came from the federal government in a couple of different ways, and we use that purposely to help address student need coming out of this anomaly of an experience that I don't know that anyone knew how to, to, you know, truly figure out what exactly was going to be best, but we knew that that support was going to be incredibly important. So I cannot, I cannot thank the administration enough for everyone's creativity, their hard work, their dedication, and the faculty and staff along with it throughout all of these processes. So, you know, I think this is, this is an investment worth making, this budget, and it's, it's crucially important for our students. So thank you all very much.
Well, thank you, and thank you to our colleagues, our administrative, teaching, clerical, custodial support. I mean, the things that we've been able to navigate because of the folks that work and are committed to the school district and this community is extraordinary. Things have not gone quite so well in a lot of places, and we have wonderful people in our classrooms, in our offices, in our boiler rooms, in our cafeterias, and it's those folks that coming together through all of this, even as hard as it was and as exhausted as many people are. It's, that's why we're here today, because of the team and every single one of those 520-plus employees in the school district. So thank you for all of your support and making it possible for us to bring these innovative programs forward and supporting our crazy ideas to figure things out and help our kids as best we can. Thank you.
Okay. So I will open it up to any members of the public that have any questions or comments related to the budget. You can please come to the podium, state your name and address, and comment or question.
My name is Heather Cologne. I live at Three Gypsy Place in Rye. I've been a resident of Rye since 2015 and am currently the co-president of the Rye Middle School Parents Organization.
Hi, my name is Fiona Shoup. I currently live at 44 Oakwood Ave in Rye, New York. I have also been a resident of Rye since 2015, and I'm currently the co-president of the Milton School Parent Teacher Organization.
On behalf of the five parent and parent teacher organizations here in Rye City School District, we are speaking tonight in support of the recommended budget proposal for the 2022-2023 academic year. The schools and our community have faced numerous challenges over the past couple of years, from dealing with COVID and all the logistical challenges that have ensued from the pandemic to handling the remediation of flooded buildings and fields from Hurricane Ida. The district has consistently stepped up and demonstrated its unwavering support to our students and our schools. The proposed budget will allow the district to continue that work and to fulfill its pledge to our schools as articulated in the Rye commitment, which is there behind everyone. For our students, the budget funds recommended additions to instructional staffing, the expansion of critical mental health services, as well as engineering and life skills programs, and continued work on the district's capital project, which has resulted in numerous improvements to our schools and our children's learning experiences in them. For our faculty and staff, the budget will ensure that they have received ongoing professional development, as well as the continued support ongoing professional development, as well as the continued support to provide them with the tools and information they need to ensure our students receive the highest level of education. For our community, through the increase of mental health and wellbeing services, top-notch academic programming, and continued infrastructure improvements to our schools and fields that benefit our community as a whole. The proposed budget is tax cap compliant and, from our perspective, a thoughtful and responsible budget. The second proposition on the ballot would be using lunch fund reserve monies to fund the HVAC project in the high school cafeteria. And if anyone's been to the high school cafeteria, you will know that it is desperately needed. This is a tax-neutral proposition and, and we hope that you will join us in supporting this item as well. And separately, in the spirit of Teacher Appreciation Week, we would like to take this opportunity to thank all the teachers, staff, and administration for the amazing work you've done over the last year. We appreciate your continued leadership and dedication to our students as you guide them through their learning journeys. On behalf of all the Rye parent organizations and parent teacher organizations, we say thank you.
Here.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Laura Labriola, 34 Dearborn. I've lived in Rye for 27 years. Many of you know me as a longtime outspoken advocate for special education in our community. I've spoken many times at many Board of Ed meetings, to four superintendents, three special ed directors, and countless other administrators over, over the course of these years. I have a stepdaughter who's 29, a daughter who's 18, who both attended Rye City School District from kindergarten to 12th grade. And my son TJ, who is in special ed, is currently transitioning out of 8th grade to being a freshman in high school. Prior to this, most of my advocacy efforts have been to point out the deficiencies in the school district regarding special education. And for a long time, I've had a great concern and trepidation about how my son would transition to Rye High School. But I'm here tonight to say thank you and how excited I am for my son and his transition to high school. There are so many people to thank, but to name a few, I'll start with Dr. Erin Friedenberg and Amy Osoli, and all of TJ's teachers and aides and supports and other providers. Also, special thanks to athletic director Susan Reed Dulia.
Dulay.
Dulia. And coach Jonathan Sable, and of course, Dr. Byrne. They say it takes a village, and I really do feel like I have the entire village of Rye City School District on Team TJ as he heads into high school. I personally have seen a huge shift here in the district with the supports for special education students and the Rye commitment focus on providing equitable and inclusive environment. TJ has become a star on the 8th grade football team. Coach Sable has arranged for him to get a touchdown at every single football game. And his, many of his other classmates on, in the salt squad, which is the life skills class, I see them on track team and in the school play. So, to me, the best part of all this community involvement is to see how kind and inclusive the other students are. And even when we were playing our rival Harrison in the 8th grade football game, after TJ's touchdown, all the players came up and gave him a high five, including the kids from Harrison. So, I can share a video if anyone really wants to see that. Needless to say, there have been a lot of proud and heartfelt moments over the recent times. And I really feel the district has made a lot of positive changes. And with that, I just want to emphasize how important I feel the passing of this budget is to continue these ongoing efforts. The budget is not only fiscally responsible, and also just kudos to you, Gabby. I'm a numbers girl and I see this book. It's, good job.
Every year, every year.
Yes. So, not only is this budget fiscally responsible in that it's tax cap compliant, but there's a continued focus on supporting excellent academic programming. And while the programs supported in this proposed budget will benefit all students, I am thrilled personally to see the district continuing to advance in areas that really enormously benefit the special education students, including the work in the Haskins Lab, the support of the mental health and wellbeing of our students, the therapeutic support services, expanding the life skills class into high school, and also the importance of ADA accessibility upgrades. So, I'm just here to say on May 17th, please vote yes to the Rye City School District budget so we can continue to support this positive change in equitable, inclusive school system.
Thank you. I think that concludes our comments related to the budget hearing specifically. I don't need to do any, no, okay. I don't know why it felt like I needed to do something official to say we're done with the budget hearing.
We just get to move on.
Just get to move on, yes.
And next.
Policy.
And next. Not yet.
Not yet.
Excited.
Yeah, I'm going to do it.
But now, what I don't have out is my statement for, right before the non-agenda items. So, give me one moment.
You haven't memorized it?
I don't have it memorized. I should have it memorized, but no. But I don't. Here we are.
Okay, I'll take a second.
I don't want to miss anything. Okay. So, moving on to the Hearing of the Public on Non-Agenda Items. We welcome and encourage our community members to address the board at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and if you are representing an organization. To ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. So please understand that we may not respond publicly to your comments or questions at this time. We take your comments seriously and may need more time to process and research an issue. We will ensure questions will be addressed by the appropriate staff member or possibly answered at a future board meeting. We will not entertain comments regarding individual students or district personnel, as these are protected under state and federal privacy laws. Please know, we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to follow the appropriate administrative channels. As a reminder, the community may submit written comments at any time to the board by sending these to rcstboard@ryeschools.org. Okay, seeing no non-agenda item comments, we will move on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Chris Repetto, seconded by Tom Stein. And before we officially approve it, we will go through each of the bucket items, see if there are any additional comments or questions. So we have consent agenda general.
Yes. Sorry. In accordance with the withdrawal policy, we're going to go ahead and take a look, the suspension policy, this is, ah, going to try it again. The policy related to the suspensions of policies is 2410. And as such, as part of the process for suspending policies, I want us to go ahead and share the reasoning for the suspension of each of the policies as listed. So unless anybody has something in that bucket before we get to this bucket. Okay, so here we go. So, policy 2265, shared decision-making and school-based planning. This is a policy from 1997. It has never been reviewed or revised. And as part of our look through the plan for school-based planning and shared decision-making in accordance with the new compact for learning, which was effective July 11th, 1994, is no longer in effect. Therefore, we are withdrawing this policy. Questions? Okay. Moving on to the next policy, policy 4720, testing performance assessment programs. This policy was implemented in 1997. Since 1997, we have had the installation of No Child Left Behind, which now mandates that districts perform standardized testing and assessments of all students. Therefore, we are withdrawing this policy. Questions? Moving on to policy 6231, Title I, PSEN, PCEN Program and Services. This one is from 1996. And these PCEN, PSEN programs and services are no longer in existence. Therefore, the district will be removing this policy, suspending this policy as well.
Are you sure that's proven?
I thought it was in our best interest to just kind of do a little housekeeping. I don't like messes, so I think it's just better for us to just, and by suspending, we still leave it in our, that's not a good word to use. We are still going to keep it in our folders, where we will have access to policies that are no longer being active. They are archived, that's the word I was looking for. So we will always be able to retrieve them if we need them, but we will not be using and implementing them.
They won't be active anymore.
Correct. They'll be archived. All right, next. 7500, procedures for plaques and signs. This is a P for a procedure. So you will see in the next grouping of policies that we talk about, we have policy 7500, which is the policy surrounding plaques and signs. The policy and the procedure are identical. So, we are withdrawing, we are withdrawing, we are suspending the procedure as we have a policy that will govern said plaques and signs. Questions?
If we had instead suspended the policy and kept the procedure, what would happen?
You can't have a procedure for a non-existent policy.
So we chose the policy to keep.
The procedure.
And archive the procedure. Every once in a while, we hit a home run in policy. So, moving on, closing of facilities, 7800. This one is from, this hit, yep, April 1996. This policy, as you will know, we have a new facilities policy that we incorporated the closing of facilities policy into. So this policy, as 7800, is being archived, but has been incorporated into our new facilities policy. Therefore, we will be archiving this as well. All right, next. 8111, reporting of hazards from June 1998. This policy is now part of what one would think of as OSHA. So there is a federal rule law mandating how exactly we are handling our known hazards. And so therefore, we do not need to have a policy on the records because federal law will always supersede any of our policies. Questions? Okay. 8212, vandalism. This policy is now incorporated into our student code of conduct. Therefore, we are going to suspend this policy as it is incorporated into our student code of conduct, where that gets a review every year. Whereas this policy hasn't been reviewed since 1998. Next one, this is the last one. Incidental teaching, 9211.2, from November of 1997. This is now incorporated into our teachers' employment contract. So therefore, this policy will be suspended as it is now covered in their negotiated employment agreement. And this brings us ever so close to being out of the 90s. We are like, right there, right, Kelsey? We're so close. We're going to get there. It's my goal, my personal goal for this year.
How did you guys figure all these out?
How did we do what?
Reading policy by policy.
One policy at a time.
Well, but I don't just mean the policy, that's easy enough to read a policy, but all of the like, oh, it's redundant that this one, or OSHA stepped in. I mean, it seems like you guys are a font of information.
It is the genius of the policy committee, Tom. And you too can sit on it next year if you so choose on your ranking sheets.
I'm sorry, your microphone doesn't seem to.
Tom, it's a lot of baby steps in the policy committee.
Yeah, that policy committee doesn't work in baby steps. Nope.
Okay, moving on, moving on.
A lot of, a lot of sugar too, a lot of snacks.
Thank you very much for all that background. It was really helpful to have a sense that, the, looking at them, it seemed as though there would probably be other areas that superseded a lot of these, especially the code of conduct. I picked that one up right away. But I'm, you know, it's good to hear all the different rationale behind it and I think for the public to hear it as well.
Yes, and just to know that there is a board policy that regulates how we suspend policies. And so making sure that we follow our policies when reviewing our policies.
Yes, we were actually just following policy 2430.
You're welcome.
I'm very proud of ours for being so good.
That's what we're here for.
I'm just, I'm just saying that I am on the edge of my seat for the eighties.
For the next group?
For the eighties and then the seventies. If this is what the nineties brings.
Oh, no, sir. We're out of the seventies and the eighties. We're going to the two thousands.
Join policy if you want to have this kind of conversation. We're moving on.
But we'll come back.
Okay, consent agenda fiscal construction.
Gabby, could we get some color on the change orders, especially the Arrow Steel, the allowance authorizations into change orders?
Yep. So, just to remind everybody, allowance authorizations are items that are built into the bid and ultimately the bid award for items that will typically come up, that are known but undiscovered at the time, but are typical, such as, and I always use the example of asbestos removal. But in this case with Arrow Construction, it is the contractor, thankfully, that has won the bid and has worked in the district before and is currently doing the window replacement at Osborne and Midland School, but also did the window walls here at the middle school. So, proven, tested contractor. But unfortunately, what was omitted in the bid spec when we issued, in particular, Midland, was screens for our windows. So, we are utilizing the authorization to ensure that all of our windows have screens. It exceeded the allowance that was built into the bid and has, the remaining requirement for screens is being captured in the change order that you see there. You're welcome.
And then we have.
Fiscal consent.
Consent, yeah. I was like, where did fiscal go? Consent agenda fiscal. Any questions on that? I think that got moved to a different page. Yep, okay. And then we have professional appointments and classified appointments. I think that is it. Oh, and then, wait, there it is. Sorry. And then special education. Okay, so then can I have a final vote on approving the consent agenda? All those in favor? Six, nothing. So just to point out a couple of gifts that we have on our consent agenda this evening. We just approved a $5,000 gift from the Osborne PTO to support Bosie's programs school-wide. We also approved a gift of $15,524.94 from the Milton School PTO to purchase and install a Gaga court. And we also approved a $15,000 gift from the Osborne School PTO to support the Mangum Sports Recession Program. So we thank all of our POs and PTOs for all their generous donations or gifts to the school district for all of these great services. So now we will move on. Oh, and sorry, thank you. We also, on this consent agenda, accepted the retirement for Frank Burkhart. It is with sadness that I announce the retirement of longtime Rye Milton School teacher Frank Burkhart. Mr. Burkhart will retire at the end of June after 25 years of working in the Rye City School District and 27 years of teaching overall. Mr. Burkhart joined the Rye City School District in 1997 as a 4th grade teacher at Milton School. Over the years, he also taught 5th grade at Milton. From 2008 to 2015, he served as the faculty advisor to the Milton Peer Mediation Club. Before coming to Rye, Mr.
Before coming to RYE, Mr. Burkhart was a 4th grade leave replacement teacher at the Bedford Village Elementary School in Bedford Central School District. Mr. Burkhart has a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration from SUNY Maritime College and a Master's of Arts in Teaching from Manhattanville College. Milton School Principal Anne Marie Pikarski said of him, "Frank has been a dedicated member of the Milton School community for 25 years. Not only is Frank an amazing teacher, he is a great colleague and friend. His 4th grade team describes him as hardworking, a team player, and a tough act to follow. Frank forms lasting relationships with students and has made a big difference in their lives. Students love to come back to visit him. We will miss the sound of a ball bouncing in the hallway as he walks his class to lunch. We wish Frank many trips to Disney and many Giants games in his retirement." In his retirement letter, Mr. Burkhart said, "It has been a privilege and a pleasure to work for the RYE City School District for the past 25 years. Leaving RYE hasn't really hit me yet, as things are always busy here. Milton is in a great position as I leave with not only a fantastic leadership, but a committed faculty who genuinely care about their students. We wish Mr. Burkhart all the best in his retirement." So, now we will have information and discussion on more policies.
Told you we'd be back. Okay, here we go. So, policy 2341.1, Consent Agenda. You will see the markup here reflects the removal of the last paragraph, and the board, the committee, the policy committee, has made this recommendation as a result of the way in which the consent agenda is now processed. Since we no longer take the consent agenda as whole, we now break it down into sections and then intentionally ask if things need to be pulled for discussion. As such, we found that this last paragraph was no longer needed and not really helpful or reflective of the current practice of the board.
I got a question on that.
Of course.
We changed a couple texts. Isn't that paragraph that gives board members the ability to pull items from the consent agenda for a separate discussion and separate vote, isn't, don't we need that?
No, you can, the board can choose to pull an item from the consent agenda at any point.
Anyone on the board? So, it doesn't need to be put in a policy that we have the ability to do that?
No, does not.
Okay. That was my only concern.
Okay. As the rest of us go back and reflect, please know that this will go back on the agenda again, so you can reflect again.
I'm glad I gave you a ton to reflect on there, I really do.
Always, always, Chris. That's why we're here. This will come back again at our next meeting for a second reading, so please take that time to reflect accordingly, and we can discuss any changes if need be. Moving on to the next policy, 5450.1, Notification of Sex Offenders. So, what the policy committee did here, again, is the removal of a third, I say paragraph, but really it's a sentence, but anyway, what happens with the removal of that sentence is we incorporate that information into the second paragraph when we enumerate out to whom the superintendent should reach out for notification related to sex offenders. And then, the fourth paragraph is an update to Gabby's title in her work and capacity as the district's Freedom of Information Officer. It is no longer a Law Records Access Officer. And then, there are no such regulations that need to be implemented or created related to this policy. The policy is very clear that the notification must take place. So, any questions about that? Okay. Again, this one will come back at our next policy meeting. And then finally, as referenced earlier, policy 7500, the naming of school buildings and facilities, as you will see, this policy at the very end did in fact state that we would have a district procedure, which then was just a direct copy of the steps outlined in the policy. So, as such, we are just removing that procedure and then updating the policy to reflect that there is no reference anymore to a procedure.
Got it. I do have some questions, because it's kind of interesting policy. We use the word normally a lot in there, and I don't know what that means in terms of a policy, in terms of what is normal and what's abnormal. It says, well, we'll normally be named for geographic area of the community, and I'm not sure when we would have an abnormal time, but we can. So, I'm not sure what that, it kind of, it kind of is a word that's in there that says, this is what we normally do, but we don't have to, ever.
Correct.
So, I'm not sure why it's in the policy. But that's a kind of a broader.
That's an existential conversation you want to have. We can have that existential.
Sort of eliminates the need for the policy. We're gonna write this down and never have to follow it. And then it says just specifically that buildings can be named after people. Is there ever a situation where we might want to name a building after something other than a person?
All of our schools.
We can, or it can be named after a geographic location. So, it seems oddly specific that we limit it to, and then we don't limit it. I'm confused by the whole thing. I'm not sure if that's helpful at all.
Okay, and see, that's something we're gonna have an opportunity to reflect upon.
We're gonna think about that, see.
And we'll think about it, and we'll take it up at our next policy committee. Policy committee will not be meeting, however, before the next board meeting. So, I would ask, I would ask that you reflect further, and if this is a topic that we should have a more robust conversation, we can certainly pull this and wait and do that as such. This policy has not been reviewed since 1997.
I will say, Chris, that it's not saying that the board could choose, following the process, to name a school, not necessarily after an individual, but it could choose to name it after an individual, so.
It just seems like a lot is written down that doesn't really provide much guidance, except that we can do what we want, which is fine by me.
Well, it does, it provides categories and frameworks to work within, as what policies should typically do, right? Policies are really intended to be more broad than they are to be narrow, because that would be a regulation. So, certainly, if you wanted something that was more definitive, it would be adding a regulation to this policy as opposed to necessarily changing the policy.
It's not that big a deal.
Okay.
Just curious about it. Does anyone else have the same curiosity, right?
Some of the same curiosity, but I will just note that since this policy was adopted in 1989, I do not feel fulfilled.
Feel okay with it?
He's back to the eighties.
Oh, you're back to the eighties now, you're feeling all right? All right, then.
You have another reason why I'm not on the policy committee.
It's all right, I still talk to you. All right, thank you.
So, we will, so if anyone does have any additional feedback or questions, please get those to Jane so that they can be reviewed at the next policy meeting, and then we will have these come back for their second reading at our next meeting. Although you said you won't be meeting as a policy committee before the next meeting. So, we would wait, we would probably have to have these after if you had to meet again.
Correct, correct. If after reflection time, somebody wants to ask us to do a further due diligence of it, we will do such.
Got it, okay. Okay, so that brings us to communications to and from the board. Any committee meetings? Nothing? Okay.
We do have an audit committee meeting scheduled for the 20.
May 23rd?
23rd, Monday.
Okay.
Monday, the 23rd. Believe it or not, it's the external audit planning meeting. Yeah.
Is that time already?
It's happening.
That time already.
Yep. We're going.
All right.
Yep.
Great. So, I think that then brings us to the end of our agenda. We will be adjourning into a second executive session to review a litigation, and we will not be coming back out into public session. So, can I have a motion to adjourn into executive session? Chris Repetto, seconded by Tom Stein. All those in favor? Tom? Six, nothing. We hope everyone can come out to vote on May 17th for the budget vote, as we discussed tonight. The vote takes place in the RYE Middle School Gym, and the hours of voting are from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Thank you all for joining us. Good night.